And Commissioner Mobley to do the invocation and the pledge if you'll stand please.
That's right. God, I probably come for you this afternoon to God, Lord, to render thanks for all that you've done for us, how you kept us, how you continue to keep us to God. You watch over us, they got our families, our homes, they got a little blessed to be in this nation, God, that we will have freedom. We thank you, God, for opportunity to serve this board, dear God, to serve your people, dear God. Dear God, for the county as well, family, God. We ask you to bless us, especially every county commissioner, our attorney. Mr. Scott, dear God, everyone that we have in this department. We pray that you bless upon us, God, we shall be blessed if you bless us. Live on all that's here today, God, we give you praise in Christ your prayer. Amen.
Let's leave it at the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Looks like we got a full crowd tonight. Welcome, everyone. We'll start with item number one, approval of minutes for the February 21st, 2023 regular boarding meeting. Is there any discussion or do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor of I. All opposed, same sign. Five zero approval. Moving along to the consent agenda. We're going to pull item number seven for discussion. So we're need a motion to approve or is there any discussion on items two through six and eight through 10?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items two through six and eight through 10 on the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor of I. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Item number seven, authorized naming the Douglas Center soccer field, Dansby Field in honor of Theodore D. Dansby. Commissioner Perkins.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, so we had a request from the Douglas High School Alumni Association, Historical Association, and alumni from the Douglas Center. We've developed that into a park and they've been instrumental in helping us with some improvements and direction over there. They requested as one of their projects this fiscal year. I have Mr. Ford and some other board members here, but Mr. Ford, the president of the Douglas Alumni, he may say a few words here and correct me if some of my information, but Mr. Dansby is one of the most influential and instrumental principals back in the 50s and 60s when the Douglas Center, you know, was an all-black high school. And so they wanted to honor him as a principal for one of the football fields. It's now in the area of our current soccer field, but it was the original football field from the high school, if I'm correct. And so they wanted to honor him with a small memorial, you know, type plaque, name it Dansby Field in honor of him. So that's where we're going with this. They came to the rec board, they approved it, felt like would be a good thing to do, and so we brought it to you guys for your blessing. Anything you want to add, Mr. Ford?
No, Mr. Chairman, may I approach?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ford.
Here, here, I'll do it.
Okay.
Just name and address, Mr. Ford, for the record, please.
My name is Robert Ford, address is 8896 135th Loop, Live Oak, Florida. Mr. Chairman, board members, esteemed administrator, Mr. Scott and Mr. Pruvet. As Jason has already articulated, you know, the reason behind it is naming it, I think he did an excellent job, is that when that school was formed back in the 50s, that was the first time that African-Americans had a kind of sports complex. And that location where the current soccer field was named Dansby Field back in that day. Of course, you know, when integration ended in 1969, that complex turned into a middle school for a while. Then after that, it became the Douglas Center. And we feel that, you know, honoring that location with a kind of plaque, just saying that this is Dansby Field, just kind of honor Mr. Dansby, which was very instrumental during that era. Most of you probably don't know, but during that era, they had over 20 African-American schools, or community-based schools throughout the county, because each small community had its individual school. Then they closed those schools down and moved them to the Douglas Center and had a consolidated school, one through 12. Before then, those rural schools only was elementary schools that went to first to the eighth grade. If you wanted to get a high school education before about 1955, you had to come up to the Douglas School, the old Douglas site. But once they formed the Douglas Center or that complex, they will go from the first through the 12th grade at Douglas. And Theodore T. Dansby was, he was a kind of giant of a person during that era. I was small during that time, but some like Mr. Hinden in the back who graduated 1957, remember him, you know, very well. And he was very influential, we think would be, we asking your permission to name that location Dansby Field. And I would entertain any questions from the board or the public.
There's something I have there, I don't have a problem with naming the field, but, you know, we having some issues that we have, it came before and we had a problem before about wanting to name, naming part of that area with the previous commissioner. And to alleviate the problem, I get calls and you're very familiar with our last meeting, we have a PAL, and think that went on there, so to keep down controversial problem, I would like to know that if those things happen, I know I'm going to be one to get the calls for it. I wasn't aware that we were naming it, you know, we have some other issue, I mean, other that asking for some names out there. I think Mr. Furrier and Mr. Scott know as well, we have some conversation about that. So to alleviate the problem, being called and being given these, about people getting unhappy about.
Certain thing, I'm sorry, getting unhappy, well, I think I talked a lot, I don't know if you'd hear me. But, so we don't have that problem, alleviate that problem. If I know being a commissioner in that area, that district, you know, I've been, you know, been aware of what was going on, so that I can be able to help to alleviate the problem we may have in the future of others having problems. You were well aware of that what happened the other day at the PAL meeting, right?
I'm aware of it, but I don't make a connection what went on with PAL and this initiative and correctly.
Well, it's the camaraderie of problem that comes up, you know, we had the issue about those fussing about the young lady, the thing that happened there, so a lot of things happened at the Douglas Center. So be able to keep everything down, I would like to know about somebody to handle those issues.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Commission, I, correct me if I wrong, when, once the rec board passed this initiative, I prepared a packet of all the information and I left it at your home, a white envelope and put it in your door. Then a few months, a few days after that, I think I asked you, did you receive the information? If you had any question, please contact me. So I don't recall you ever contacting me about, you know, the information I left for you.
I don't, if you did, you may have, but I don't remember having that either, Mr. Ford, I don't remember having that information as well. I mean, you could have left there to cheer and be there, they might have picked it and put it in there on my desk, or put it somewhere, I wasn't aware they brought it in the house, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, I apologize for that and I.
I mean, there's no respect about, you know, trying to be, but yes, for clarity and for clarification, you know, that we follow some steps there, so we don't have any problems.
And that's not, that's not Mr. Ford's responsibility, that's my fault for not contacting you after they brought it to the rec board. So I apologize, Mr. Ford and Mr. Perkins, we'll make sure that we notify, you know, projects in your area.
Sure.
And items.
You know, we have, we have, I don't want to cut you off, but we have a problem with the others thing that we've been dealing with.
I'm familiar with what you're saying there, separate issue, but no, that's on me, so. So I apologize, no reason for the Douglas alumni to be called by that, that's on me, so.
I want to ask a question, because I've turned, I get calls and requests all the time to name roads, name bridges, name this, name that, and I try to steer away from doing that. Just because once you start down that road, you gotta keep doing it. And so I don't have a problem, this is, this is, you know, it's fine with me, I don't mind, but are we going to have any kind of issues? Is there anybody wanting to name it something different or is there going to be a squabble over this?
No, I think the other issue is some, some folks are still alive. And so we have hesitancy to name something after somebody still living in the event things change in their life and something happens. So in a historical situation like this, I think a memorial, a man has passed, we know his history and what he did at the Douglas Center, I think it's appropriate, but when people are alive, I think it's a different story, a different conversation. But no, we, I haven't heard anything about any other, any other.
Mr. Ford, do you know anything, any different?
Mr. Chairman. Just to be clear, this is just a field at the Douglas Center? Not renaming the Douglas Center or?
No, it'll just be a plaque over by the soccer field, near the fence or the road somewhere where, you know, small little sign just commemorating and memorializing.
Well, I know they named the football field in Brantford, but that's the school board, not the county, you know, so.
Definitely a problem.
I don't, I don't have an issue with that as long as we don't have a conflict somewhere else with this.
Mr. Chairman, I will say, I sit on the rec board with Mr. Ford and he gave a very nice presentation to the rec board in which the rec board did approve the request from the alumni and it was pretty amazing what Mr. Dansby and the folks at that time went through. Remind me, Mr. Ford, wasn't there, how many schools did you tell us at the rec board meeting that there were scattered across Swanee County until they consolidated, that was?
But during the actual time when they consolidated, I think it was about 23 schools, but it has been 44 rural African-American schools that are on record and I think they're part of that package that you, that we provided the board that day.
I found that pretty amazing. Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Yes, sir.
Just a parody, I mean, I'm for it, I'm not against it, but I mean, the procedure, the steps we're taking with it, because, you know, we had also with the gym equipment, Mr. Scott and you both know, we were getting calls, both were getting calls about that and the other issues we've been having, just trying to look at those problems, that's what we're going to get into.
Communication, it's all about communication.
Yes.
And I've got some more information, we didn't have enough copies in that first round, so I'm going to pass this out on my way back.
Commissioner Perkins, are you okay?
Yes.
This is your district, so.
Sure. Fine, but I just, you know, just make sure we follow those procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, motion to approve item number seven by Commissioner Mobley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor of I. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Any staff items? Any staff need to say anything?
This guy again.
He's getting to be like Jimmy Norris.
I guess he's trying to fill Jimmy's shoes, I don't see Jimmy here, he's not going to make up for the difference.
I've been hanging out with Jimmy too long, sorry. Just two quick things, one, an update on the fairgrounds, we have a couple of Department of Agriculture grants that we need, we're going to go ahead and start moving forward with, we're working with North Florida on some conceptual design. But need to replace those livestock barns and the Conflatworth building over there that are not suitable, not conducive for showing animals in and getting grandmas and grandpas and parents in the building. So we're going to replace that, we're, right now the plan is to demolition, demolish, sorry, demo the old Conflatworth building that's there and then the ag barns next to it as well. And then just rebuilding that place, so of course there's a permitting and design process and we'll work through all that, but that's the game plan for now. If anybody has any heartburn or any ideas with that as we move forward, just if you would.
Well, when you talk about demo and you talking about the show ring and all too?
Mm-hmm. The old block building there, the Conflatworth. It's small, the bleachers are just inaccessible.
Mr. Chairman, in our rec board thing and the bleachers, the concrete bleachers there aren't really ADA compliant and just some issues there, have been for years, so hopefully we can obtain some grant funding.
We have some now, we have another big chunk we applied for this year that we're praying for.
Yeah, but as far as we get too far on that, two-fifths of that goes to District Five, just so you know.
For their, for their ag barn?
Why two-fifths?
Well, because they got all the grants before, I ain't got nothing, so.
You got a rodeo, you just bought 40 acres.
I think we'll help the Fair Board down in the south part of the county write a grant.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
I'm just, I'm just playing with you.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Chairman, what you're talking about, I mean, when they have some of those ballgames out there and all, they have to put them on the side of the court and things like that, if they're in wheelchairs and stuff. It's just not always the safest place to be, so, yeah.
The last thing I was going to, was going to mention was just about partnerships and we're talking about the Douglas Center and we worked through that, but that's a great project over there, the whole Douglas Center property. With what we did, I know there was some, you know, controversy when we, when we demolition, demolished those buildings. Tough time with that word tonight. But we have, we've made that a great facility and a great partnership. Pilgrims gave a big chunk of money towards that new playground and that park. The historical, the Douglas High School Commission has made improvements over there with the historical monument and veterans' flagpole area. The PAL program is housed out of there with, you know, the sheriff supports. And now, what I wanted to mention, I say that to say this, that the Health Department is giving us $50,000 to go towards improvements at that park as well. They have some health equity money that, that they want to invest in that, in that park, so just proud of the partnerships. And you hear Mr. Norris, you know, talk about that too, but partnerships in our community and the way we work together to make these things happen, so thank you to the Health Department.
I've seen some pictures on those fields down at Brantford, looks like it's coming along pretty good.
Opening day's coming up, you're, I hear you're throwing out the first pitch.
Man, I got a bad shoulder. I don't want to look weak.
Better start practicing. All right, thank you.
Jason, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Perkins.
Mr. Furrier, have you got any plans yet of where we're going to spend that money on that area?
Which money, which?
For, from the Health Department.
Yes, sir, well, she's, she, Ms. Link from the Health Department has some ideas, there's some specialized play equipment for accessibility and for like, I don't want to say handicap, sorry, I'm losing my words, but some accessibility money, some autistic children, there's some play equipment specially for them, sound and manipulate with your hands. And so we're trying to put some equipment in there for, for some of that accessibility, for some kids with some disabilities, I guess is the word I was looking for. So, yeah, she's got some ideas.
Didn't we approve the insulation over there at the gym and we started on that yet?
I'm sorry?
For the insulation in the gym?
And the air conditioning and insulation, I would defer to Mr. Durham, I guess, on that. I know they're working on it, but no, there's.
Well, I just wanted to cover the whole Douglas Center thing while we, while we on the issue, so.
Mr. Chairman, next commission meeting, we're going to have an agenda, Marshall, we're going to get an item to go forward with getting things done right on the insulation and getting that process started, so that'll be on the next agenda.
It's one of those things that's more complex and complicated than just throwing an air conditioner in with a wall sweating and different types of things that he's mentioned, so, yeah, we'll bring that back to you.
Just wanted to update on, thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to grill you so much on all that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to thank, we had, talked about, Mr. Chairman, about that, we have a question that Mr. Ford asked about with our last PAL meeting, and I talked with Mr. Robinson to give him information about it, but it's doing it in a stage, at doing the work at the Douglas Center, in the installation and the wiring and then the AC unit, to be doing it in stages or phases, doing it.
Well, again, it's going to be at the next board meeting, making a request that we go out for proper engineering to imply it in there properly the first time, so that we don't come back and do it again.
That's always a good plan.
Yeah, the reason I come up tonight is I just wanted to update y'all, y'all gave us funds to update the, update the cooling tower for the air conditioning at the courthouse and at the jail. And that project is about 95% complete, but it's up and going. There was just a few little things that we have to tweak out on the backside of it. We were fortunate, we were able to bring everything back up every evening instead of keeping them down for two weeks. So I think the sheriff was happy about that, that we wasn't have to keep that as a sweatbox over there. But I just wanted to let y'all know where we were at with that.
Well, while you're here, the, while we're on the subject, at the fairgrounds, the plumbing, we approved to do the bathrooms or something a while back, didn't we?
The front bathroom?
Yes, sir.
That was a collaboration between Parks and Rec and myself. We actually went in there and we did install a lift station into the front bathrooms, we were having that little bit of issue up there. And, you know, we're biting that elephant one bite at a time, we're just, we're working it through, but we want to, again, we want to go in there one time, do it right, and then walk away from it, not have to come back.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mark. Moving on, item proclamations and presentations, a presentation by Brad Martin, 811 Safety Education, Representative of North Florida. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Commissioners and attendees. Brad Martin, I'm a resident of Tallahassee, Florida, represent Sunshine 811, we are the Call Before You Dig One Call System. My purpose here tonight is to give you guys a brief little update on what the 811 system is and then to, I've been in touch with Ryan Crespo at the Building Department, we're looking for some enforcement. Sunshine 811 is the call center of Call Before You Dig, any contractors in the room, excavators, by any chance?
Yes.
Commissioner over here.
Okay, awesome, I'm sure you're quite familiar then, I'm always happy for any questions that may come about. I talked to some people that really have never heard about it and then I give an explanation that we've, we've all been exposed to it. If you walk down just about any street in the country, on the sidewalk, you see the red, blue, yellow, green and orange paint marks in the flags and stuff, those are all representing the different utilities for a proposed excavation that's going to take place. It actually includes demolition too, so when you get ready to demolition that building, make sure you call 811 first for all the utilities. But the 811 system is just a communication hub, we were created by Chapter 556. I've given each of you this little situation, it's got an enforcement portion and a Cliff's Notes, and you'll notice that it's actually bookmarking the, the actual statute in the back. 556 created Sunshine 811 to administer the provisions, we're a call center. So talking about the communication between folks, that's what we do. If you're going to dig a hole anywhere in the state of Florida, you're required to notify all the utilities through the 811 system. All of the utilities are required to be members so that they can receive that notification and the system is wholly funded by those utilities, it's a free service, it's a free call. If you're going to do any landscaping or excavating in your yards, guys, make sure you 811. Two full business days prior to doing any excavation for your own safety, for the safety of the general public and for the protection of Florida's infrastructure. That's our main goal, is to protect our infrastructure and make the, the job sites safe out there. Point again, for the purposes of my visit with you folks tonight is the federal infrastructure monies are coming down the pipe. They actually have not really been released yet throughout the countries or at least here in Florida. The One Call System, we receive a ticket or a call, which generates about seven different notifications to different utilities per, per call. And we are quite busy, quite busy, the call center's located in the Orlando area and we're receiving upwards of 10,000 tickets a day, which generates on average seven different utilities. Obviously, Swanee County's not as big as Jacksonville and Orlando and Miami and Tampa, but I do work with all of the different utilities over there, I've already been in touch with the, the city, their code enforcement and working with their gas companies and getting some updates already underway and things with them. But with that, about 41% of all damages throughout the state, throughout the country rather, are, are without a One Call Ticket. They did not make the notification to the 811 system. Every state in the country has 811 legislation and 811 is nationwide. So regardless of where you may be in the country, if you move somewhere else and going to do something, 811 is the number to call before you do any excavations. With Mr. Crespo and the city code enforcement, as you can imagine, once that money starts coming down the pipe, we're going to see an increased level of excavation activities, construction projects, road building. You may be familiar with the fiber to the homes. I'm not sure if they've really hit Live Oak in Swanee County as of yet, but Gainesville right now is screaming because they've got 200 contracting crews coming in with just plow, plow, plow and directional boring. So it's, it's really a big thing. It's a two full business days notification, within that two days, the utility is doing something to, for that request. They're putting the marks on the ground or making a communication of an all-clear or rescheduling, communication with the excavator. That's the biggest thing, is contractor and the utility communicating out there in the field. So no damages occur to those utilities and everybody's safe. So we're afraid that the, with the increase of the potential coming down the, the construction, you know, pipe, is that there's going to be some, some corners cut, we need to make sure that we're kind of ready and we're looking at the enforcement aspect. Enforcement of 556 is left up to local and state law enforcement agencies, the sheriff, the city police, code enforcement primarily. There is no state agency like the FHP or the Public Service Commission that oversees it. We're just a not-for-profit and, and it's left up to the local jurisdictions to do the enforcement of the statute. The gas companies, Florida Gas Transmission is a huge pipeline that comes through your location. Sable Trail Pipeline, you guys are probably familiar with their construction that they came, they cut down and basically parallel I-75 headed to the Orlando area. Live Oak Natural Gas, we've got gas in the area as well as all of the other utilities, but you can think about hitting a gas pipeline and boom, we've got a serious issue. You know, catastrophic might be only localized to a mile radius, but it's catastrophic for those people that are in the mile radius. So we want to make sure that we're pushing the enforcement aspect. Mr. Crespo asked me to come and give you guys a brief presentation on what the 811 is about, be available for any questions. I would love to work with the county attorney for any issues or purposes of that nature, the state attorney's office even if necessary and I would, and I will be working with Mr. Crespo and the city code enforcement. Travis, I think off the top of my head, he's already on board and they're kind of looking, but they asked me to come as a courtesy for you guys, just to see if there were any questions or concerns or anything of that nature proceeding forward. A quick note about the enforcement process. If, if a contractor, if you didn't have a One Call Ticket and law enforcement pulled up, it's a $500 citation. Okay, those are in all aspects. Well, 80% of those monies collected by the employment, the employee, so code enforcement, the county, 80% of those monies collected by the clerk's office would stay here within the county. That's the way the statute disperses the, the monies that are collected, doesn't get lost in the state general fund, in other words. If it's city police or the city code enforcement, the money would stay with the city and so forth. FHP, DEP, FWC, those acronym, you know, alphabet law enforcement agencies, the money would stay with that state agency type of a situation, so. With that, I won't take up any more of your time unless there are any questions, I'm standing here all night for you. My main target audience are the excavating community contractors, so we go into great detail in educating the Call Before You Dig process.
So if somebody calls and gets an 811 ticket, say we're putting in utilities or whatever, the contractor calls and gets it, do they, do they depth locate that stuff or is it just line of sight?
It's, the horizontal route is what the statute calls for and that's essentially because nobody knows how deep they are. I mean, even your, your city and county utilities, I could put a water line in the ground, you know, 20, 24 inches deep and in 10 years, there's no guarantee that it's still 24 inches deep, so. The contractor has responsibilities when they're going to be digging around those marks and those facilities to verify the depth before boring under, before trenching across and even paralleling if they're going to be close to, to actually visually verify statutory requirements. And those are the types of details that I go in with, with the construction.
So you say there's a $500 fine, but say 811 or the utility misses something and what, who's responsible for repairing based on whether or not you got an 811 ticket?
Okay, you're, you're talking about a liability question and I'm not an attorney, that's where we would defer to those folks. So if you didn't have a One Call Ticket and you damaged a utility, might as well get your checkbook out, from my own personal perspective. The utility is required to mark their facilities within 24 inches type of a situation. If you're digging 10 feet over there, I've got my One Call Ticket and you missed marked your line, now I have an argument of why it's not my responsibility, you failed to provide me with accurate information of where your facility is, so how could you possibly hold the contractor liable? Now, if I just didn't have a One Call Ticket, or if I had a One Call Ticket and there are marks and I just dug right over without verifications, you know, visually inspecting, then that would be a violation on my part. I'm supposed to dig and dig with care and increase precaution, just having a mark there's not going to guarantee that no damages occur and so forth, so. Those liability issues are left up between, again, the communication between the utility and the contractor out there, so we want you guys to talk if there are any issues beforehand, during or after. We know who to talk to, those types of situations. $500, I say, with the city having gas and Florida Gas Transmission, there is an enhanced penalty of $2,500 if you were to be digging around a FEMA-related pipeline and hazardous material safety administration, a gas pipeline primarily in Florida. Could be diesel fuel, could be jet fuel, any kind of hazardous material, that enhanced penalty goes up to $2,500 per violation. And if an incident were to occur, the fine incident in the statute, $50,000, you know, somebody got killed or a gas pipeline explosion and we had, you know. somebody got killed, or a gas pipeline explosion, and we had, you know, major situation, obviously the State Fire Marshal's Office is going to investigate and could hand down upwards of $50,000 per violation. So those are the three levels. If you were to destroy the marks or tear up one of the permanent markers, that's a second-degree misdemeanor, and that's handcuffs downtown, looking down at.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
And this, the answers may be in this pamphlet, but I haven't had a chance to read it all yet.
Right.
My question kind of goes along with Commissioner White's. I see here the repercussions and the penalties for the citizen or the person wanting to excavate. Who enforces the companies that have the infrastructure in place? Say they don't respond within, you said 24, 48 hours?
Great question.
Who holds them accountable for doing what they're supposed to do on their end of the 811?
It's left up to the same enforcement agency. So you call in a one-call ticket, contractors complain lots of us because they're calling in multiple times. It's not really that big of a deal if I'm just going to plant a tree in my backyard. I'm a one-time caller for the most part, right? But if this is my job, Anderson Colombias of the world building roads, they got tickets going in nonstop. And the utilities hopefully are working with them, and the locating technicians, you know, on a regular basis exchange telephone numbers. But that, the failure to locate the lines is a citable violation, just like the failure to make notifications. So the utility could actually have a citation issued against them by code enforcement, by the county sheriff, by the city police, by DEP, FHP.
And how many of those enforcement agencies have you seen actually write a ticket?
We get a report pursuant to the, well, it's more recent legislation, but it's three years ago, I think it was, where the county clerk, County Clerk's Association has to provide us a written report. We had 63 citations written last year.
In the state of, in the whole state.
So that's why we're really pushing and hoping for. Now, I take that as everybody's following the law, and there are no violations in the statute. It's the way I choose to look at it, but we're really trying to make sure that the-
Well, I suspect your violations got wrote after an accident occurred.
Right. And the whole process, I'm going to be working with the code enforcement, with the law enforcement, the sheriff's office, the city police. If you could assist in getting them to be proactive, would be, make sure that they have all of the education that they possibly need. You know, it's one of those kind of things where utility has their investigation process. They don't need me. I'm busy robbers, rapists, and murderers, you know, type of a situation. So they, a lot of the city police and the county sheriff's offices say that's a code enforcement scenario, so that's why we're really trying to beef up the code enforcement education in case. The gas companies, Florida Gas Transmission, if they have a contractor digging on their lines, they need somebody to call. And so we're trying to make sure everybody's got that education in place.
I understand.
So when they do call, we won't be, no idea what you're talking about.
Right.
So is 811, is it a state agency, or is it private?
We're not-for-profit, created by the statute.
Okay.
You have to call before you dig. Well, who are you going to call? You're going to call us. We send that notification out, and then they pay for that call, essentially making it free for you. So it's really just a hub of communication. I usually explain to most folks, if you were going to call all of the utilities directly, you're going to look at who you get a bill from. Well, there's other folks like Florida Gas Transmission, or Long Distance Fiber Optic Cables, MCI, WorldCom type folks that may be in the area, could be dangerous to dig around. And even in a demolition type of a situation, there might be a gas meter or electric meter attached to that building. You know, in the hurricane situations, I've seen in Pensacola, it was a big deal years ago with Ivan, bulldozers just plowing them over. Panama City with Michael, just plowing them over. Get that out of here. We got to get that off the ground. There's still gas and electricity hooked, you know. So that whole process is in place to assist with that communication.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perkins?
Just, not a question, but just a comment. I do appreciate the services I get from 811. I've called them several, several times, and very user-friendly. And do get them out, they do within a couple, well, within 24 hours, they do get results out. But also make it easy for me, I can go on the computer to find out if my ticket is clear.
Yes, sir.
So that's where I think with Commissioner Land asking about it, make sure all that they all are notified, because, you know, granted, you wouldn't know, I would know who all have transmission lines underground, so I wouldn't know who to call, but you all make the calls for us as in that general area.
Correct.
So that do saves us as contractors' time.
Right. Yeah, the law says you have to call. Well, all of those utilities have to be members of us, so we know who to tell that you're digging a hole around their stuff, and the mapping, and lots and lots of details that go into that whole process that I wasn't going to waste your time with today. I do a one-hour to two-hour presentation for a contracting group. We get into great detail on positive response and how to communicate and what you're supposed to do.
I've got a couple of invites for training sessions.
Yeah, I would urge you guys to look for the paradigm meetings. That's where all the gas companies get together and hire paradigm to do their gas presentation. Probably the closest here would be Lake City. It's a, the gas companies under federal regulations are required to educate homeowners, anybody who's going to excavate or dig around their facilities, and then they are required to educate the fire departments, emergency responders, public officials. So they have federal regulations to do that. So it's a free meal, and come learn all about the gas stuff and how to respond for fire departments and things. Gas is a different animal. You just don't run up and start throwing water on the fire. Don't turn valves. If we, emergency responders in the rooms, don't touch the valves. Don't touch the valves. But I'm not a utility, I'm not a gas company, electric, telephone. I'm just an 811 representative. So we try to be that middle moderator, bystander, you know, innocent third-party to help with any issues and communication as Commissioner Land is getting to. I suspect you've had an issue, and I deal with those on a daily basis, yes. Okay?
Any other questions?
No, sir. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you guys very much.
We appreciate the information. Appreciate you coming.
Appreciate your partnership and helping make Florida the safest place to dig.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Moving on to Commissioner items, any Commissioner items?
Yes, sir.
Hey, I have, go ahead.
No, 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 no. I was just going to tell Mr. Martin that our meeting may last another 30, 45 minutes, so you won't offend us if, I know you said you live in Tallahassee, so if you want to leave a little early, we tell that to everybody who comes from out of town.
I will slide quietly out then.
You won't hurt our feelings.
Were there any questions from the audience? Yes, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Mr.-
No, that was great.
No, I was just going to say, is Jimmy not here?
No, he had to go to Tallahassee.
Do we want to mention what we attended on Friday under?
Yeah, go ahead. You're the board member.
Simon, Simon walked right into that.
Walked right into that. Sucker. Yeah. I'm going to keep it short and sweet, something Jimmy don't know how to do, but-
You're going to pick on him since he ain't here?
We had our NFEDP meeting here Friday in Suwannee County, and-
What does it stand for?
North Florida Economic Development Partnership.
Right.
Yep. And he's trying to put me on the spot, isn't he?
He's helping you, man.
So anyhow, we normally don't have them in Suwannee County. Jimmy is the chairman of that board, and he does a great job leading that, for that board. But it was just a great turnout. I just wanted to let everybody know that we had folks from about 13 different counties and cities, as far away as Bunell, and Trenton, and Chiflin, and just everywhere around. I mean-
Hundred, hundred and something people.
Over 100 people turned out, and the food was amazing. I tell you, it was great. They actually, Jimmy and Chris kind of set us up. We didn't know we were going to have to serve the food to 100 and something people, but we did, and it went off really well. Just proud of everybody that came, and all of the support that the board had, and the other, Mr. Scott was there, and Jason, and everybody that was part of it. We just appreciate it. It made us look really good on that platform, and that's a very important board. Our Suwannee co-op representatives were there and spoke, and it's a good time to be part of Suwannee County, I can tell you.
It was.
We're represented well, so just wanted to mention that.
And I want to give a special shout-out to Commissioner Mobley here. He did a lot of behind-the-scenes work on that, of getting the venue and getting the food put together for everybody, so appreciate that.
The gentleman wouldn't share the recipe on the potato salad, but I'm going to tell you, man.
That's good stuff right there.
That's good stuff right there. That's why I started a diet the very next day.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to county attorney items, Mr. Attorney.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
General Business, item number 12, discuss with possible board action reinstating the former contract between the Lafayette Veterans Service Office and Suwannee County. Mr. Scott?
We were notified that the Veterans Service Officer for Lafayette County was going to leave that office and have a void. Years ago, we had an agreement with Lafayette County that we sent our Veterans Service Officer to, over the, one day a week to Lafayette County, and they have asked us to do the same thing this time. We have time in the day, in the week to do that with our current guy, and he's willing to do that. We have an agreement that we've drafted, old draft that's forwarded to the attorney. So if it's the wishes of the commission, we basically recoup our cost for travel and for hours, and just have an agreement. I would request that you approve that and ask the county attorney to follow up with their attorney, work out any details on agreements, let them sign it, bring it back to us, so us to sign as we get started.
Any questions?
No, sir. I would just say, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem with that. You know, we want to be neighborly to our neighbors, and I believe they've helped us out in the past during some employee turnover times and whatnot, so it's at no loss for us, you know, just to be neighborly and help them out. I'm good with it.
I as well. Anybody else?
No.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Land?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o'clock. Item number 13, discuss with possible board action repairs to the supervisor of Elections Office. Mr. Scott?
As you recall, last meeting, we discussed some issues we had at the Supervised Elections Office. Staff reviewed costs we incurred in the renovations. Just remember, things important, that we went that direction to restore the Mizels property. It was a nostalgic building, and the commission at the time looked at wanting to save that if we could. Moving forward, Mr. County Administrator at the time, Mr. Harris, pulled a permit under his license, since when we found some things that we would have done differently in your packets, is the cost that was incurred and other things that we might should have done differently. We need to get some direction. We did check with the insurance company, and we got notice today that the insurance company will not pick up a tab on that due to the way the work was done. We'd like to, we got, need to move forward to make some improvements there. I think we need to look at repairing what we have in the short term, look at a longer-term plan. I know that the supervisor, I'm sorry, the tax collector, property praiser, all needs more space, the public defender needs more space. Look at, we need to look at options, I think, for locations for those, whether it's older or shopping centers and other areas, but I guess maybe look at, looking at those facilities. Once we get the repairs done, we may, in the same time, want to look at the Supervised Elections Office and see if we need some professional opinions on what upgrades we need to make in the long term if we do that. Need to do that with the same people. So the firm we use in Tallahas, or I'm sorry, they're out of Tallahassee, but the guy that's living Madison, that, the Rutherford Company, that has done some good work for the county before. Let them look at both of those, see, make recommendations on if we wanted to fix things in a bigger picture for the Supervised Elections, but also look at our future needs also. But I think short term, we need to authorize going forward with doing some basic repairs initially, and then have the analysis, see how far we go into the repairs later.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land?
Mr. Scott, a couple things here. Number one, I agree 100% that before we invest a tremendous amount of more money into this potential, or this property, that we need to have Rutherford or some professional do a complete analysis of the structure. I mean, I'm looking at the data package, and we're at $727,000 into that piece. I believe it's been functional two, three, four years? How long have they been in there? Two years, and we're already making repairs? That's just unfortunate. However, you know, I understand also that the current condition, I've seen it, I think they told me just about every commissioner has been by there and looked at it at some point or another in the last few weeks. It can't stay like it is. It's, I mean, we got to do something. The floor's tore up, you can see the subfloor, and the problem needs to be cured first with the roll-up door in the back and the ceiling of that, I believe, correct, Mr. Durham? But I just don't want to see us, this thing get out of control. I mean, it's headed in that direction already with this dollar figure, and two years in, we're making, I think 60,000 was a rough estimate.
Budgetary estimate.
That was a budgetary estimate, which means that may or may not, it may fix it, it may not. Is this, that 60,000, is that our guys doing it, or is that, that was subbing it out?
That was subbing it out, yes, sir.
Is that bringing it to code?
No. That is, that is mitigating the issue at hand right now.
So we're looking at 60,000 to get back to where we were. And where we are, where we were is, we don't really know. And that's where I'm, that's where I'm getting at with Rutherford, who's an architect, public may not know, is an architect, construction design type person, so I don't know how much they charge to come in and do a complete analysis of a structure like that, but I would be inclined to pay a reasonable fee to know exactly where we are, so that we don't continue to put 60,000 every two years into a structure that could potentially be failing somewhere we can't see.
Right. Yeah, I wouldn't recommend over-investing. I mean, we need to do some basic stuff, and it's more expensive than what we want to put into it, but still, we got to have it functional for now. But moving forward, we do, do any analysis, I want to see what we need to, look at the whole picture. You know, there's, you know, there's things that are not the code, and, you know, so-
Mr. Scott or Mr. Durham? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Do either of you know how much roughly one of those type inspections would be with Rutherford?
I do not.
And is that something that we have to go out to bid on, or is that a sole source, Mr. Fravat?
We already have Rutherford on as a consulting contract. I didn't go back and look to see if that type of inspection falls under that contract. If it does, then we would not have to go back out.
Okay. So if we've used them in the past for that type of, that type of study, then I'd ask them to come look and see what it's going to cost, or what they're going to charge us to do that before we get, fix the short term. I'm okay fixing the short term. I mean, those employees there that work there can't continue to operate like that. But long term, kind of like know where we're at. At no fault of any employees, but I'm not casting shade. I just wanted to say that, too.
So just to get them back to where they can operate, is there a guess on that? Just fixing the floor or whatever, to just get them where they can work in there?
That was to seal the vapor barrier and overlay the floor again, redo the flooring, and close in the back door where the moisture intrusion took place that caused this problem. That's the 60,000 budgetary estimate that we were given.
But what I'm, what I'm asking is, before we spend that 60,000, is there any way, until we can get this evaluation done, is there any way to just fix the floor where it's level just for the short term until we can, or they are at what it is, like it is for two or three weeks?
We could possibly take several different avenues. The back is storage right now.
Yes, sir.
So we could possibly seal up the doors going into the storage area. That way, if there's any airborne, anything that are irritants for our employees there, deal with that. And the back door where the moisture intrusion is, my recommendation right now, the short term, would be to seal that up to prevent any further moisture from coming in until we can get an assessment by a qualified professional what's going to be the best way for us to proceed.
Well, right now, you got a lot of moisture coming in there, because-
It's not bad now, sir. I'm sorry.
No, I'm talking about the cracks in the floor where you took the plywood up at.
Actually, the floor underneath is good. Underneath was good, yes.
Well, I mean, I knew the old wood boards and they were still in great shape, really.
Those are original, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Speaking of this, I know, I've spoken to the, you know, the staff down there and I, I'm not sure they had as much input as they probably would like during that time. And they have expressed, I know probably to everyone else, I know to me, wanting more storage area and things of that nature. Just when we have this gentleman come in or someone, make sure we take all that into account, you know, that we don't have to come back again. Like, like you were saying earlier, do it right, get it done, whatever they need to operate.
Yes, sir.
And function properly, for sure.
Well, it's just a perfect time to, while you got the property appraiser, tax collector, you got the sheriff wanting them building back there. I see you smiling back there. You got a lot going on right now and that's why I want to use the caution before we sink a lot of money into that building that we evaluate, like Mr. Scott said, we evaluate the whole picture first and that's why I just wanted to kind of patch it over until we get to that point. That was my plan, if that's all right with you all. Commissioner Bob.
Did we hit a dead end road on going back on the contractor?
I was about to bring that up. I know that, you know, that's a legal question as far as, you know, going back on the contractor. But I refer to the attorney for that. But if you read, as a layman reads it, yes, but I am not an expert on that. So I'll defer to the expert.
I get to be an expert?
Oh, you're on the hot.
I get to be an expert? Okay, cool. Well, quite frankly.
Did he sign a waiver? Did he sign a waiver?
Well, there's a, there's a number of different issues here. I want to, I mean, if I have to go through, you know, any and all of it, a number of different issues, but generally speaking, I'll tell you what it typically says is an employee is not held liable for ordinary carelessness or negligence in the performance of their duties. However, an employee acts outside the scope of reasonableness, causing damage or injury to either property or persons, an employer may be able to sue that employee for negligence. Depending on the circumstances of the case, extreme negligence of the employee, acting outside the normal scope of reasonableness or outside the duties of their job could allow an employer to sue. Okay? Now, for the conduct of, for an employee to be considered within the scope of their employment, he must have been the, it must have been the kind for which the employee was employed to perform, must have occurred within the time and space limits of his employment and must have been activated at least in part by a purpose to serve the employer. Now, that's kind of the general language that you see. What we have in the state of Florida, we have, what you'll see is what is called sovereign immunity. And typically, an employee, sovereign immunity is when a typical employee makes a mistake and it causes damage to somebody that's outside of a third party, if you would. Then that third party could not sue the individual employee under the sovereign immunity unless they would have to just sue the employer, which county, they'd have to sue the employer unless such act or omission was committed in bad faith or with malicious purpose or in a manner exhibiting wanton and willful disregard of human rights, safety or property. That's the standard. That standard also gets flipped inside what is called qualified immunity, which is, again, in the governmental situation, the government being able to sue their employee utilizing those terms, it's called sovereign immunity versus qualified immunity. Quite frankly, that's the general overall scope. The, you know, looking, it's very, very fact specific, you know, of what we need to look at. Like you said, with the, with the, the permit, you know, why was the permit done in that fashion? I haven't been able to complete an interview, all of those, you know, types of, of those folks yet to, to see why it was done. We know that, we know that one of the folks is, is passed on, Mr. Rogers, you know, that was involved in that situation at the time. So it's making it a little bit difficult. But to sit, to sit here and say 100%, I'm not going to say 100% because I just haven't finished it yet. I've put a lot of time into it already, which I won't like the bill for, but the, but I'm just not comfortable telling you 100% either way, you know, at this particular point.
Just a question.
I'm leaning, I'm leaning heavily one way, but.
Well, we're not exactly suing the employee.
Well, to be able, I don't think that the employee would voluntarily pay for whatever your damages are in this circumstance. So I'm just assuming that that's what's going to have to happen. Okay? Now, even, even if it falls over into just the contractor realm, one of the things you have to do under chapter 558 is be able to give that contractor a notice and give him 30 days to come in, inspect, either fix it or make a plan to be able to fix it and then, you know, work things out like that. But what I have found so far is that I have not found a circumstance where a contractor would still, a contractor that is an employee would still fall outside of that realm. I'd give you a simple example, and I'm trying to be real specific, guys, you know, because take like, and I'm not going to pick on anybody in particular, but say an FDOT employee that's an engineer. He's an engineer, uses his license every day to be able to stamp anything and everything that gets approved by DOT because that's what his job is and he utilizes his license to be able to do that. If that employee makes a mistake and that employee, it costs DOT a whole bunch of money, you know, and they're, that employee, because he was acting within the scope of his duties, even though he was negligent and made a mistake, would not be chargeable for those costs, you know, in there. And this is the same type of circumstance. Again, very fact, fact specific. So before I, you know, render it 100%, I want to be able to talk to, you know, anybody and everybody. I've kind of gone around a little bit, but I, I just want to be honest with you and say that I'm just not complete.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
Mr. Pravat.
Yes, sir.
We talked about this two weeks ago at our last board meeting, I believe, on this stuff and you were going to look into it, but I got a couple of questions. I understand you haven't had time to fully research it. While that's unfortunate, it's just a fact of life. But my question to you is, have you, I got two questions. Number one, have you sought an AG's opinion on this?
An AG's opinion?
An Attorney General's?
No, sir, have not and have been authorized. I can't seek that, you know, without y'all's particular authorization to be able to do that. Although I have searched the AG database on this issue extensively.
Is that something you would like to do, seek an AG opinion? Or is that, in your professional opinion, would you need that or is that something you would like that?
I think I need to have one more step making that determination before I ask for that.
Okay.
I'm not there yet.
And then secondly, you use an example as an engineer, engineering stuff for DOT every day using his professional license as his normal job duties. Could I ask you, how many permits did Mr. Harris pull using his GC license in his 10 years here at Swan County?
Commissioner Land, I don't have any idea. The second issue.
And I don't either, but where I'm, where I'm going with that is, I would suspect to say that it's less than five and it being his normal day-to-day duties, I don't believe it would fall in the same example that you used. It's just my point.
And one of the things that I'm also looking at is you have to also turn to what the employment agreement was with Mr. Harris. And under his employment agreement, he has specific duties that are delegated under there and whether one of these would fit the particular category. I'll be honest with you, at this particular point, the only category that I can see that would be close to fitting Mr. Harris utilizing and doing this particular aspect is under section F, which would be 4F, which was to, is part of his duties are to supervise the care and custody of all county property. As a specific duty. Again, I'm not the determiner of the facts. Y'all will have to make that determination, you know, later on, but that was part of what I, a part of the research that I have, you know, to be able to prepare, you know, for y'all. But y'all have to make that determination.
I don't. Mr. Chairman. I honestly don't believe that it's under his daily, the example you just used, I guess you got that out of his contract, I don't have that in front of me, but I don't think his daily routines in that particular item that you're related to would have been carrying and maintaining property to the tune of three quarters of a million dollars.
Well, again, Mr. Land, the summary that I was making, you know, was just a brief overview of, and given a typical example. You know, I'm not saying that that's what the facts are, you know, which y'all will determine, you know, in this case of whether y'all want to go forward, you know, once I get all of that, you know, together. I was just trying to be responsive to the question.
I understand. Does it cost anything for an AG's opinion? I mean, what are the, I guess I'm asking you, what are the pros and cons of seeking out an AG's opinion?
Well, they're going to, typically, you have to outline a specific set of facts for them against which they then make the opinion. So that's the first thing that, you know, that you have to, that has to happen. Honestly, the cost used to be 125 bucks, but I don't know what it is, you know, right now.
I would be interested in someone laying out those specifics, as you discussed, and, rendering a $125 opinion, but that's, I mean, that's just me. If that's all, that it, that's all that we're out.
But you still got to complete your due diligence here, I guess.
Well, I would like to have that, like you said, that outline and set out facts, you know, to be able to do it. And quite frankly, in the two weeks period of time, you know, like you said, I'm just discussing with Commissioner Land just before we got here, I've had some things happen personally that I haven't had on the job for, you know, this flat two weeks since the last meeting, so doing the best I can in the meantime.
I understand, I understand.
Mr. Pravat, wasn't it in his contract that he wasn't to engage in any other business while he was hired on as administrator for Swan County?
Yes, those specific words are not there. It's, he is to give his sole, sole duty and attention to here.
But during that time, he pulled two other permits in Ucalah for.
And again.
Under the I mark construction as well.
Again, it'd be a factual thing that I'm not, I'm not familiar with.
So.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
I, I think that, you know, we just need to approve. I say we, I'm okay with approving, that's up to y'all, what y'all want to do, but I'm okay with, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. I'm okay with approving the temporary fix on the budgetary 60,000, right, Mr. Durham? 60,000 to fix that. I'm okay with fixing that. I mean, those employees that work in there can't continue to operate like that, like it is now and sealing up the back door with the moisture problem. And then also authorizing Mr. Scott to contact, I forget the firm's name, but Rutherford is one of the partners about coming in and doing a, what, what that fee would look like to come in and do a complete analysis of the property.
The six, can we fix it for less than 60 grand right now just to, to get it, till we can get all these other things?
I believe we could isolate any possible aerosolized problems toward the staff up front and then we could get the opinion of the person that we're going to have come in and give us an assessment of the structure and then move forward and then we're not throwing.
Yes.
Good money after bad.
Yes.
We're doing it all at one time.
At least maybe seal up the back doors.
We can seal up the back. The only downside is, is the sheriff's staff that's on the one side, that's their access to their bathroom, but it will just be an inconvenience in the short term.
I mean, I hate to see us go.
I don't want people to go lay laminate flooring again and then the, we got to tear it back up. I, I agree.
Yeah, I would just like to put some plywood back down just where you tore the floor up? Or are you still going to just rip it all up now?
My, my idea at this point would just be to seal the doors up and don't enter that area until after we have made our assessment.
Mr. Chairman, hopefully Mr. Rutherford could expedite this particular thing since we're kind of in limbo.
He will. I don't think they're, they're, they're not actually utilizing it for anything other than storage at the moment, so it's not.
It's storage and bathroom access for the sheriff's staff that's in transportation on the other side. Yes, sir.
Right, right, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Scott, what do you need from us? Is that all you need or do you need any kind of motion or?
Well, I would probably motion to that effect, but just.
How about a motion to approve the moisture barrier not to exceed?
Just say 60. I mean, you don't.
Okay.
We got a number, just use it, but.
I think he's saying something different.
Yes, I am.
He's saying something different.
We won't, we won't pursue the moisture barrier in the floor at this time.
Just the doors, I'm following.
Just seal up that, make it a non-accessible area. Until we know that's what they want and then we, because we're not talking $60,000 now, we're talking 200.
But I thought you were going to do something to that roll-up door.
If we can seal up the whole back.
I got you.
And just make it sealed for now.
Where nobody goes in and out.
It's a temporary, it's a very temporary, cheap way of keeping people out of the back until we know what an engineer is telling us we need to do.
They got an ice machine back there. You ain't going to keep them out.
All I can tell you is there's bagged ice at the store, sir.
That door's locked out.
I can tell you something about ice machine. I went Sunday and fixed my ice machine because my employees show up on Monday.
Yes, sir.
There's going to be ice in the box. Whether I got to go to the store, put it in there, I'm going to fix the ice machine.
I've got a small refrigerator, I'll let them borrow.
But, but Mr. Chairman, in doing that, I think what Commissioner Land said, if we could try to get that firm to expedite and get over here and look at that, that would be phenomenal. I'll call Will in the morning or tonight.
So a motion to temporarily?
I move to, to allow staff to temporarily fix the Supervised Elections Office with the, with the.
Seal.
Proper sealing.
There you go.
Motion by Commissioner Land. Is that good, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir, that's fine.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o.
Mr. Chairman, does Mr. Scott need a motion to contract or, I don't want to hold this up for another two weeks, if, do we need a motion to authorize him to enter into an agreement with Rutherford not to exceed a certain dollar figure? Does he need that?
You have a guess at what the number would be?
I have no, sir.
No clue.
You got a guess?
I would think it'd be under my, my spending authority, but I've been wrong before.
I have no idea.
Should be.
If it does, you'll just have to bring it back, I guess.
Well, no, I mean, if it's under his spending authority and we have that in, that consulting agreement now. I mean, it'd just be fine.
Okay. I got you. Then he can handle it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we all clear on that?
Yes, sir.
Everybody good?
Yes, sir.
Additional agenda items or any, are there any additional agenda items? See none, moving on to public concerns and comments. No takers? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jack, you did, I'm not used to them filling out. Mr. Jack Shaw.
He is, he is brought forward, moving the meeting time to 5:30.
Yeah, I just wanted the board and Mr. Chairman to consider moving the, the meeting times to 5:30 for working folks or anybody else having, may have a hard time getting here by five, so I would appreciate if you would consider moving to 5:30 or possibly a little later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything to say on that while we're on the subject? Yes, sir, did you want to speak? Okay, that's fine, just come on, just name an address for the record.
E. Fontana, 201, 81, 144, the street's libel. What I want to talk about is the last meeting. What I wanna talk about is, um, the last meeting, uh, during the public comments, there was a lot of issues brought up. And, uh, first of all, I wanna say that I was impressed and I really appreciate the professional manner in which both county employees and, and everybody responded, and even the public. There, I think, for the most part, we were pretty, pretty civil, which was good. But the one thing that concerned me that came up was the issue of conflict of interest. And the reason is, with conflict of interest, um, it could be something that's minor, that somebody recuses themselves for, or it could be something that's, um, if it goes on a while, maybe it's, it's not so minor. It, it's hard for me to tell as a citizen whether that's something major or not. And given all the turnover that we've seen the past few months, I, I just wanna be sure that, that we, we need to depend on you, um, we need to trust you, and you in turn need to entrust, uh, both the county employees and, and the legal advice. And if there was conflict of interest that you weren't informed of or something like that, then, then that's something that maybe needs to be addressed and, and taken care of on a go-forward basis. 'Cause otherwise, we end up in, you know, trust, we need trust. We need to trust you, and you need to trust county employees.
So I'm assuming you're referring to Mr. Byrd's commentary last meeting is, I'm just trying to nail you down on what's specific.
That was, that was, that's what, that's what brings up my concern. But, and again, it was just, what I was hearing kinda surprised me, and it was the first time I was hearing it. So I don't know as many details as you may know. And I just want to, um, just make sure that, that you have confidence in, um, the, the leadership of the county on a go-forward basis and, and the legal advice. And this is, none of this is personal. Again, like I said, I really appreciate the way the last meeting was held. And, uh, but I, I don't know, I, I need to ask that question, 'cause it was, it's, it's been gnawing at me past couple of days.
Thank you, sir.
That's it. Mr. Fontana.
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there any one specific that you're talking about?
Well, the, the concern is, is the conflict of interest with the, the legal advice. 'Cause that's, that's where you get into a, and, and I understand that that could be routine, but at the same time, it could be an issue where, where, um, you have the best of intentions and you end up in a bad place. Or worst case, it's, it's, um, it's a, maybe, and I, and I don't, I'm not accusing anybody, but
Right, right.
A lot of towns get in an environment where you, you tend to do things a certain way, and if that becomes like a standard practice, we, we, we wanna try and nip that in the butt and keep that, you know, however we can.
And I'm like the chairman here, I'm just trying to nail you down on your specific concern. Um, and, and I'm guessing that what really got kinda under your saddle, if you will, was the fact that Mr. Pravat was representing Mr. Adams suing Mr. Byrd for months prior to Mr. Adams coming into the county's agreement to buy the fire station property.
Yes, sir.
And, and where Mr. Pravat can't prove or can't show where he disclosed to the board of county commissioners, whereas his contract is written with to report to the county commissioners, he cannot disclose where, or cannot show where he disclosed to the board at that time that Mr. Adams was his client.
Yes, sir. Timing's crucial on a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh... Uh...
Hi, I'm Carol Lee Howe. Um, my address is 7408169 Drive. And I concur with this gentleman who just spoke about the time. It's been a while since I've been back to the meetings because they went to 5:00, and it makes it very difficult for, for me to get a ride here on time. So 5:30 would be, would help a lot.
Appreciate it.
Or even, or even 6:00. 5:30, 6:00, but it would help, so.
We, we appreciate that.
Good to see you back at the meetings.
Good to see you here.
Thank you.
Just 'cause we got one more coming.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I know Mr. Norris stepped in after I, I had spoke, but he may wanna give a, a better update.
Of course he does.
I tried to make it as quick as possible.
I've been getting pictures of him all day and how impressed everybody was, and...
Yep.
I mean, what are you paying them people to do that? I'm sorry, Mr. Moses, name and address for the record.
Moses Klepper, 14581, 102nd Path, Live Oak. The, uh, Mr. Fontana, he tapped into several things that, that, uh, that I got to present to. Several of us got together over this concern, Mr. Byrd's, um, issues, and, uh, actually, this goes back for me, all the way back to when we had somebody else sitting over there, and, which brought me into this room for the first time anyway, was the fire station deal and the alleged corruption and all. And I've already expressed myself on all that. But this, to me, it ties in, and, and actually some of what he was saying and, and the, the folks that put this, helped, helped put this, uh, paper together, I'm, I'm gonna read it. It, uh, it, uh, come together with, uh, consensus of more than one person, and, uh, I, I believe it to be true. I haven't done complete investigation on it. I, uh, don't believe there's anything false in here, and there's some opinions, but if you, if you allow me, I'll just read this. It's, it's, uh, "On March 1st, 2019, Randy Harris approached Glenn Byrd about buying his land on behalf of Ronald Adams and NSYNC." On March 13th, this is a timeline. On March 31st, 2019, Harris signs Ronald Adams' name to the purchase agreement to purchase Byrd's property. The purchase agreement was provided by Jimmy Pravat, county attorney, see, uh, which is documented with Adams versus Byrd for verification. On May 30th, 2019, Mr. Pravat filed lawsuit representing Mr. Adams against Byrd for specific performance of the purchase agreement, as Mr. Byrd refused to close and wanted out of the agreement. On September 26th, 2019, Mr. Harris meets with Brian Cobble to sign the option to purchase agreement for Cobble's entire 19.24 acre tract. The agreement was in Harris's personal name and prepared by Jimmy Pravat. November 15th, 2019, Mr. Adams and then, or NSYNC closes on the front 8.1 acres of the fire station for the exact same price in which the county purchased the back parcel, at least per acre. Mr. Pravat handed both contracts and, handled both contracts and represented both parties, but hasn't shown the board of county commissioners where he disclosed the fact to the board of county commissioners that Adams was also his client. He stated that Mr. Harris knew, however, Mr. Pravat's contract is with the board of county commissioners, um, not Harris. November 17th, 2020, NSYNC requests a zoning change from agriculture to commercial on fire station property. Pravat gives legal advice to the board of county commissioners during meeting, yet again does not disclose that the landlord applying for the zoning change was also his client, who was Mr. Adams with NSYNC. November 24th, 2020, Commissioner Land brought up concerns about the fire station property in the county commission meeting. December 8th, 2020, Board of County Commissioners votes 5-0 to send fire station property issues to ethics. On December, and only on December 21st, 2020, Mr. Pravat files a motion to withdraw his counsel of the Adams versus Byrd case due to potential conflict interest. So during this time period from March 31st through 2019 to December 21st, 2020, um, can anyone show me where Mr. Pravat closed that, disclosed that Mr. Adams and Adams's company, NSYNC, were his client in unrelated case suing Mr. Byrd? Judge Fina stated in his ruling that Adams versus Byrd, that it, it was clear to him that Mr. Harris was much more than a facilitator or acquaintance of Adams. He actually had an agency, uh, relationship with Adams, to the extent that Adams authorized Harris to sign his name to a substantially large real estate contract in March 2019. Furthermore, later that same month, Mr. Pravat filed suit against Mr. Byrd on behalf of Ronald Adams. It is now more clear than ever how, out of all the people in the world, Ronald Adams ended up with the fire station property. Harris being his agent, per the court records, and Jimmy Pravat being his attorney, uh, which was undisclosed to the board of county commissioners, helped him get it. A quote from Maya Angelou states that "When someone shows you who they are, you need to believe them." As we all know, a leopard never loses his spot. I ask you why it is that Mr. Pravat is still serving in capacity as our attorney representing taxpayers of Swanee County. He clearly has not had our best interest at heart at all times. The, the minute you can no longer trust your attorney is the minute you should fire him. Oliver Norris once said, "I'm, I'm trusting in the Lord and a good lawyer." I'm convinced for the people of Swanee County that the, that lawyer no longer needs to be Mr. Pravat. One last quote by Ronald Reagan, he said, "Heroes may not be braver than anyone else, they're just braver five minutes longer." So tonight, on behalf of the people of Swanee County, I ask you to be braver for five minutes longer. Do what is right for us and remove Mr. Pravat. Also have a copy of Mr. Pravat's contract, and, uh, it, it indicates on, uh, item two, service to be rendered, that, uh, he, he shall decline representation of other parties having claims, causes of action, or interests which appear to be against, uh, the board. Uh, the, also make some notes here. Let's see, on, let's see, on, section four, no, I'm sorry, section six, attorney for the board of co, uh, for the board, conflict entrance. It goes on to explain that even in more detail, and it states that even if it's a potential conflict, that he's supposed to, uh, inform the board and get their ruling on it. And, uh, says, "Should this occur, the law firm shall promptly notify the board of the existence of such a situation. Law firms shall recommend board, of course, of a course of action to be held by the board." And, uh, also on, on, on number eight, at, unlike the, the administrator, this contract provides y'all an opportunity. It says, "This contract, uh, in any renewal of, may be determined, may be terminated by either party for any or no reason upon giving 30 days prior written notice to the other party." And it states in here some legal ramifications if it's violated, governed by the Florida law. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mobley.
Me too. I've been getting a lot of calls from folks throughout the county with possible conflict of interest in regards to our county attorney. I just feel we are the voice to the people of Swanee County. At this point, I feel it's time to make a change as well, since we've done it in the past. I wanna make a motion to terminate the county attorney's contract effective, uh, April the 25th, 2023.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mobley to terminate Mr. Pravat's contract effective April
25th.
25th, 2023. Is there a second?
That's when it's over.
That's when his contract is renewed.
So we've been getting calls all week, every week. We get stuff in the public. It's just, at some point, we gotta listen to the people and make a decision.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Land.
Um, silence is complicity, and I can't sit over here as, as, as hard as I've been asked to, as hard as, uh, over the past two years, as hard as, uh, my political life has been since that 2020 meeting. But I can't sit here and remain silent and be complicit. This isn't personal with myself and Mr. Pravat, um, but along with what Commissioner Mobley has said, I, I would say that the amount of people that have reached out to me over the past two years, and, and no offense to Commissioner Mobley, I've just been living it a little longer, the question keeps coming up. When are you gonna make a change there? Um, you know, these are, these are the moments that, that aren't easy and aren't fun. But I too have to speak with the, for the people that represent me and the people that weekly ask me, "It's time to shift gears," was your legal counsel. We, as taxpayers, got left behind of one incident that we know about, and that's the fire station property purchase. And I'll, I'll tell you, uh, without my faith in Jesus Christ, uh, my days would've been a lot harder over the past two years. But with all that being said, um, I'm on second. Commissioner Mobley's motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mobley, second by Commissioner Land. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, the thing I'll say is, again, nothing personal, but it has definitely been, I think, the forefront of discussion. I'm not opposed to us seeking different counsel, if that's the pleasure of the board and obviously the people of Swanee County. But again, it's nothing personal whatsoever. It's just a decision as a board that we have to discuss.
Uh, Mr. Pravat, I'm gonna go along with him on it. It's nothing personal, you know I like you. It's, it's just come to that point to where I think we've got to, uh, we got to make a change. And, uh, it's nothing that I take no kind of pleasure in, and I do appreciate your service. You're a very, very, very good attorney. I just think some situations have got out of hand with a lot of this, and I'm, I'll be the first to tell you, I make plenty of mistakes. But I just, I just think it's time, time for us to make a change, so I'm gonna just leave it at that. I appreciate your service. Anybody else? Any more, any other further discussion?
Since anybody's ever spoken, I, you know, I've been in this short time of being here on this board and serving this board, I feel like I don't have the, uh, the amount of time of being with Mr. Pravat. I have known him a previous time, or something, I've dealt with him over. I, I just don't feel that I'm, to do just right and to be just to say that I'm gonna, you know, cut ties with him, because I haven't, I haven't had that time enough to spend with him, so, and I wasn't here during the previous, uh, agreements I've made with this property and the thing, and so I'm, I'm just gonna, uh, remain, I guess, neutral on it. I mean, to be fair with him and this board, I mean, I have gotten the calls, uh, against him, so I don't have anything against him.
Neither do I.
And I do, I do respect everybody else's, but I just, I speak for myself.
Me as well, I don't, it's nothing personal with me. I'm just speaking for my constituents that call and, you know, on the databases. At some point, we're here to speak for them, as we voted us in, that's, that's where I'm at with it.
With that being said, any further discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Mobley, are you done? I'm sorry. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I have a motion by Commissioner Mobley, a second by Commissioner Land to terminate Mr. Pravat's contract effective April 25th, 2023. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, same sign?
Aye.
Four to one. Mr. Perkins, nay. Mr. Perkins, nay. Is there anything else I need to do there in regards to what we're doing?
Well, we need a game plan moving forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Land.
I've had two years to think about this day, and it hasn't been fun, but nonetheless, I've been thinking if this day ever came, what would we do? I would recommend to the Board, after much research on my behalf, not necessarily on the Board's behalf, but on my behalf, I would recommend that the Board select Adam Morrison, with, I think it's Morrison Sellers and Taylor, Morrison Taylor Sellers, here in town, and authorize our county administrator to enter into negotiating with that firm, specifically Mr. Morse's son, as our replacement, to bring back a proposal to the Board for potential adoption at our next regular scheduled meeting. I would, I would make that motion.
How about that? I would only say, and I don't know the procedure, and don't have a problem with those folks down there, but is it like anything else that we need to advertise and get quotes?
I've gotten an AG ruling on that as well. Like I said, I've had two years to study this, didn't know when it was going to come or if it was ever going to come, but an AG ruling, I don't have it in my pocket here, but you do not, Mr. Pravat may could allude to that if he would, but on legal counsel, you do not have to do an RFP or RFQ, whatever they may call, you may directly hire a legal counsel without that process.
It doesn't have to comply with CCN.
Yes.
And so you're making a motion to let fact?
I'm making a motion that, to authorize our county administrator to, I guess, seek out a proposal or a contract from Mr. Morrison, if he'd be so interested in doing it and what those rates will be back, to bring back an official contract to the Board for approval. Does that make sense? I mean, I can't, I don't know that we can authorize him to. I mean, I guess we could if y'all just wanted to hire directly. But I mean, you're...
I think what you're saying, bring a proposal back and look at the rates and et cetera, to be discussed.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, and I would say negotiate also, not just ask for a proposal.
Right.
With just that firm, or with multiple firms, or with multiple attorneys, are we gonna have just one discussion with one attorney, or are we gonna do more than one? Just a question.
Mr. Morrison actually came highly recommended from another county attorney, not Swanee, I mean, not Swanee County, but a separate, I guess, municipality lawyer, government lawyer, whatever they call themselves, in that career field as far as specialty. He came highly recommended, and the fact that Mr. Ernie Sellers is a previous county attorney, is in that firm, as well as hopefully Mr. Pravat being a wealth of knowledge and resource, that, I mean, that's, and it's walking distance from the annex, that's kinda why I went that direction. But there again, you know, I'm just, like I say all the time, I'm just one of five guys, but that's where I was, that's why I'm where I was at with Mr. Morse.
Restate the motion one more time for me, so I'll be clear on that.
I would move to authorize our county administrator to pursue the firm of Adam Morrison as our legal counsel negotiations, to bring back a proposal, contract for adoption by the Board at our next regular scheduled meeting. I don't know that we even need a motion for that. I might need some consensus to allow him to go get something, just bring us back what that would look like. That's what I would like to see us do.
Mr. Pravat, do we need a motion, or is it just consensus?
Consensus would be fine.
Is there consensus?
Wayne Hanica, 11883, 93rd Road, Live Oak. Just sitting in the audience, sorry, Mr. Land, nothing personal.
No, I don't take it personal.
It appears like we just wanna jump in and appoint someone without doing any research, without the entire Board having an opportunity to know anything about that firm. It just doesn't appear very open to me as a person in Swanee County.
Mr. Land.
Hey, I'm all ears of that. The last thing that I want to do is look like there's not transparency or to give anybody opportunity to do their research. Maybe that's my fault, that I just assume with those guys being right there and Mr. Sellers being a longtime county attorney, I mean, I don't know his age, but he's up in age, but he still goes to work every day. My bad for assuming that everyone would be familiar with that firm.
I'm familiar with that firm.
But, you know, by all means, if there's other commissioners that need time to do some research, I mean, by all means, let's give them some time, but I'm not, I mean, this is...
Yeah, I mean, you're always the one that says, "Hey, let me look at this, let me be sure before I make a decision."
Well, that's why I authorized him to go get, to bring back a proposal. I didn't authorize him to go sign it and let's hire the guy. I said, "Let's bring..."
I'm just saying, you're pushing one firm where it should be put out to other firms. That's what it appears.
Okay.
I too went out and seek legal counsel in another county on reference, and that name did pop up as well, Sellers with Adam Morrison, and he come highly recommended.
I hear that.
With government law.
But we're just looking at one person?
Yes, sir.
There's a whole lot of them out there.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think that's what I was getting at and suggesting that when I said, "Do we need to advertise this and get more than one quote?" And I think for public appeal of this, I think you probably should, we should get more than one, and let's have that discussion, you know? Put it out there, let folks...
Mr. Chairman.
That's all I'm saying.
I too agree. I think we should, you know, advertise it or, you know, seek more than one for the sake of, you know, cost and also for suit qualification. So, I mean, I don't know a lot about that firm, but I think we do have other firms that do, and list them to give us a quote and their qualifications as well.
Okay.
Request for qualifications.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think it'd be proper.
Mr. Chairman.
RFQ.
And I'd like to explain to Mr. Hanica why, why I was trying to expedite that, is because I think the motion was April 25th. I don't know that we will, we may look at need to do an interim, because I don't know that we will complete that process of RFQ and doing the research and getting it on the, I mean, that could be three meetings from now, and at that time, we may, I don't want there to be a lapse of counsel for the Board. I guess that, excuse my urgency, but that was kind of in my brain.
Can, can we appoint an interim attorney? And still do an RFQ or whatever, however we need to do it?
I think it's the pleasure of the Board, what direction you go.
I would ask Mr. Pravat, appoint an interim, and then you could do...
I'll note for the, you know, what y'all have done in the past is, right now, I believe, Mr. A.J. Decker is a secondary counsel that y'all can utilize. He is presently the P and Z lawyer, and you have him on, you know, contract already. You know, if the process does not work out timely for y'all, you could have that carry over.
Is, you said that the father or the son?
The son.
Son.
Does he, is he currently representing the other, I mean, would he have any conflicts? Do you know, like, is he represent, I don't know who all he represents, does he represent any other counties or anybody else? I mean, I'm okay with that.
I just know he's counsel for the P and Z.
Okay. I mean, it was...
I got a question.
He's also, he's also Berry's counsel, Mr. Baker's counsel.
Okay.
How does that process work, Mr. Pravat? Do you, how does, how does the transfer of information from one attorney to another? What does that timeframe look like? What, I mean, I've never had to hire and fire lawyers, so you're my first, so I just, I don't know how that goes.
Okay. Well, at the la, you, I will have to, you know, whoever you get on board, you know, take some time to be able to, you know, bring them up to speed with that, you know, for whatever those particular, you know, matters are. As for transfer of information, the files that I have prepared and, you know, as you as my client, those files are available to y'all because they're your files. A number of those, a number of the information that'd be in those files is already public record, you know, to be able to do that, so, I mean, those are your files, and I'd be happy to communicate with them.
So it's consensus of the Board to hire an interim attorney in the short span?
Yep.
Until such time as Mr. Scott can do an RFQ?
Okay, can I clarify something then? If I, you said that you're terminating my agreement as April 25th?
Guess not renewing the contract.
I understand. The, at that, but during the meantime here, are you immediately relieving me of my duties?
No, sir.
Then why do you need an interim between now and the 25th?
Well, it probably don't make a lot of sense, really, if you're, if it's not gonna be your permanent attorney, because you're not, you're not bringing anybody up to speed unless he's gonna be your permanent attorney, in my opinion.
And that was...
I thought that was only if we didn't have someone by that date and time that you guys wanted to do that. No misunderstanding?
Well, that would be, I mean, I would think that would make more sense, is if we don't have anybody by then, hire an interim attorney.
That's the way, yeah, that's the way.
But if we get somebody before then that we know is gonna be the permanent attorney, then, then you have the...
Yeah, I don't...
Does that make sense to anybody?
Yeah, I don't know that we need to hire an interim today. If we want to go through the RFQ process, if that process drags out past the 25th of April, at that point, we engage with Mr. Decker, who's already has a relationship with the county.
Or we may need to go ahead and ask Mr. Decker, is he interested at all in the...
In being an interim?
At least have it something in place.
So that would be something else, Mr. Scott. Are we, are we done with that?
Yeah, I think so.
Excuse me?
Still that voting on the board?
I guess I could withdraw that, since we don't really need it. Consensus would be, you said consensus, right?
Mr. Land withdraws his, his motion, previous motion.
That's long ago, I forgot about it.
Moving along to item 16, Administrator's Comments. Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir. Just a few things to...
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't want to, I want to go back to this meeting at 5:30. Concern, what, what's the process, Mr. Pravat, for doing that?
Well, Chairman usually has, you know, discretion at when to set, you know, the meetings and that type of thing, so you can pick a time, but it needs to be ratified by the Board.
Can we do it now, or...
Yes, sir.
I'd like to have the comments of the rest of the Board on the 5:30 meeting. Is, are y'all good with that?
I'm good with 5:30.
Y'all good with that?
Make a motion. Do the meeting at 5:30?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries 5-0, meetings will now be 5:30. Now, Mr. Scott, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just want to take care of that.
No worries. Just give you an update on a few things. We met with the sheriff and some of his staff and Public Works guys at Landfield this afternoon. We've been working on a firing range for them, for training, while, so resumed that, met, confirmed things. We had Mr. Locklear with the, our Landfield attorney to review, I'm sorry, Landfield engineer review requirements and have a game plan going forward, so we'll be pursuing that. Again, like, echo the NFEDP, did I say that right?
NFEDP.
Don't tell me what it stands for, but just appreciate the staff coming together. As always, you know, Parks Direct guys helped out, Mr. Norris and Chris, Chris does all the work, and Jimmy just shows up, you know how that goes. But anyway, just appreciate everybody coming together, making a team effort, really had a good show for Swanee County and having all the commissioners, that was really a big, big plus also. We had a department head meeting the other day, first time we've had one for, for years. Very good, had a good conversation, a lot of dialogue. We're reviewing, I want to review our purchasing policies and make recommendations in the future there. Give you a little example, Supervisor Landfield called me one day and said I needed to buy a pump. I said, "Well, go buy a dang pump." And his spending authority's only $500, and it was a critical purchase. I realized that our numbers were pretty low, so we've come back with some tweaks with that, suggestions later for y'all's approval or consideration, I should say. Also, we want to review personnel policies and that sort of thing, making sure that, I want to make sure that supervisors are held accountable to their staff. We're reviewing overtime now, making sure we're having overtime for the right reasons, and again, making, we're holding our supervisors accountable for those also. The, we received a letter from an Oakwood Forest neighbor, it's in your packets, giving the Public Works guys, attaboys, for what they, they did. I'm really proud of that. We made a copy of that, spit on by the time clock, and a letter from me back to the gentleman, thanking him for recognizing the team that did the work, but it was a good project and a lot of positive comments, and that's, you know, the guys do great work out there. Remind you about the Florida Association of Counties meetings next week in Tallahassee. Mandy's got everybody reserved, she's waiting on a couple of you to follow up with her on confirmations, so make sure you follow up with her, please. Did I say that right, Mandy? Okay, just checking. And we spoke with Danny Collins at Tuesday's, or last Friday's meeting, he's with Duke. They're anxious to move forward with the Duke Trail, the greenway down in Branford, and looking forward to that, but, you know, they're motivated to get that done also. The plans are about 90% or so at getting approved from DOT, so we're looking forward to that project moving forward. Be looking at some savings also on our collection sites, looking at our holidays, been paying overtime for different holidays, trying to revisit some of that. Be experimenting, planning on closing on Good Friday, we're in, it'll reopen on Saturday anyway, so we won't be making overtime that day for the collection site. So moving forward, we're gonna try to look at some of those cost savings measures without giving any less service to the public. So that's all I've got, unless you got questions for me.
Anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Pravat?
Yes, sir.
Any words?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Perkins?
No, sir. I'm good.
Mr. Mobley?
Appreciate everybody coming. And Mr. Fury, I want to confirm that on Frank with that bum shoulder. He went, he does look tough, but he's not.
At least nine a go, Rover.
He went horseback riding with me for about 20 seconds one time, and it didn't do any good for that shoulder, so he doesn't got a problem.
Mr. Mobley, Mr. Mobley, they have also girls softball down there, you can pitch it underhand?
We might send him to do that, I think he can handle that.
Funny. You're done. Mr. Land?
No, I would just, Mr. Norris wasn't here earlier, Commissioner Hale alluded to the NFEDP quarterly luncheon that was here, hosted by Swanee County, and I'm not gonna steal his thunder, because he sits on that Board, I'm gonna let him share a little bit more, but it was a really nice event. It was great to see one of our commissioners sitting on that Board. Our Economic Development Director, Mr. Norris, is the Chairman of that Board this year, so Swanee County was the host of this quarterly meeting, and Carissa and Jimmy did a really nice job putting it together, and Commissioner Mobley organizing the venue.
nice job putting it together, and Commissioner Mobley organizing the venue. Live Church to God donated us using their facility at no charge, and it was really nice. It was good, good thing, and I'm glad that, you know, the entire board showed their support and showed up to, I don't know if we were kinda captured or roped into that, but we were surprised that we had to hand-serve 105 people, but we did it. Go ahead, Mr. Hale.
Mr. Hale?
That's it, that's a wrap, man. We had a good time.
I know this against my better judgment, but I'm gonna give you my time. Do you need, do, do you wanna speak about what happened today or any of that, Mr. Norris?
Jeez. Like he thought he was gonna say that.
He's been speaking all day, he might as well finish it out.
Now, they keep a pretty tight clock over there, so they may have security to make you shut up, so. I do really wanna thank you guys, though. I know you already talked about it, I don't wanna overdo it, but you guys were there, Commissioner Mobley helped me with getting food lined up, he got the venue lined up, and then he lined up, I don't know where he went, but, but I do seriously wanna thank him for that. And then you guys were there to, to show all the other communities that it means enough to you that you served everybody that was at that meeting. That was a pretty big statement, I think, to show how much he cares, so I appreciate you for that. And like I say, Jason, his team, man, they helped set up, tear down, I mean, literally told me to get out of there, they had it. And, you know, a lot of people make things successful, and it was a team effort, so. Today, it was, the, there's a bill been introduced into the Senate to make, and I don't wanna speak out of turn, but the electric co-ops that are going into the broadband business, a bill's been introduced to make them have to comply and fall under like the Public Service Commission. So they're trying, well, it, it, it could make things more difficult for co-ops to do what they need to do. And it, even though we had all the co-ops from the local area there and several folks that testified, it did pass with unanimous vote through the first hearing, and it's headed to the second hearing. So you may wanna call our new senator and have a conversation with him about that, 'cause he voted in the affirmative, now he said he was gonna do some more work on it, and we believe that he will. I just think that maybe they don't understand that co-ops operate a little differently than these communication companies. So we're just really wanting to be sure that we can provide what we need to provide to rule America. And up till now, it's not been provided, but now a lot of people are trying to keep these guys, the same people that have turned our lights on for the last 100 years, to tell them that they, you know, they're gonna kinda get in their way and make it hard for them. So, rule America needs to stand up a little bit, I think, so. But anyway, it was a long day, but it was fun, so.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, I just need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.